All right. Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, October first, uh, psych board meeting. The board is present minus Linda, town manager, town clerk, members of the town, let's stand for the punch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from September seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that's presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One exception.
Um, abstains. All right. First, public comment. Anybody wish to make a public comment? All right, I will close public comment. We have no public hearings. No reports from committees, department reports. Jody. Our director of public works, please.
Lord, Lord.
Hello.
Uh, where I should start? So we'll start with transfer station. Sure you're all aware of the explosion of influx of uh developments and new people in the town. Uh, my plan is to work on a fourth lane at the transfer station. That's the outer side of the red building. Um, it says it's pretty busy down there. Sometimes the traffic gets out in the road. So you may see some funding in the future for that. To develop a driveway or uh around about the outside of that building out there. Uh, Taz went a pretty good job down there. And uh, things seem to be going well. Um. I mean. As far as public works goes, uh, we are down two guys at the point at this time. And you're doing a pretty good job trying to keep up on things. At least me, the three working guys, a foreman and a mechanic. We're gonna, we're gonna auction off some surplus equipment coming up soon, got a truck. Uh, some gas pumps, the new gas pumps are in. Some money that got allocated last year for that. The two new generators are finally up and running. One up here and the one up to public works department. We are preparing for plow gear and getting ready for winter. We'll be doing a lot of leaf collecting down Pine Hill. Due to ditching and water runoff, so that, so the culvers don't get all plugged up and the water usually runs out. Into the street. Some people do call from other areas and see us doing that and they want us to come to their house and. Suck up all their leaves as well, which is a service we do not normally offer to just homeowners. Just pretty much out of the ditch lines. Um. We finished up Little River paving, uh, that road is completely done. Uh, long swamp is gonna need a, a surface layer. Um, probably from the bridge to Ellie Pond. Waiting on Libby Scott to finish Bell and Rollins, uh, they did tell me September. Now they're telling me the middle of October. Uh, we only do have the one contracted. Um. Paving company, I, I hope to make that change next year. Uh, we get kind of behind the eight ball. I, I really can't work on a plan because. They're kind of overextended like four or five other towns. So when we get some kind of schedule together. It always changed whether it's them or the weather. So it's just hard to keep track of all that stuff. As far as. Making a plan. We hear about ten year plan or five year plan. It's just difficult with one contractor to try to fulfill them needs. I am working on a. Um, proposal with Seawall. It is an engineering company. They suggested a three and five year plan because they're familiar with the same situation. Uh, that people work is yet to come to my desk, but when I do get it, I'll pass it along. And then as far as facilities go. Just some things coming up with that. Uh, we got a. We're looking at grant monies for many splits, but with that being said. I would recommend trying to. Get some new windows. Whether it's a one or three year plan, um, I'm shrink wrapping a lot of them. During the winter, but during the summertime, I'm sure the air conditioner stuff is uh. Drafty as well, so it's just something to think about moving forward. That's all I got.
Is um, the uh. I believe there's money in the budget this year for waterproof from the town hall is uh, where does that stand?
That, that bid has went out. I'm waiting for the bids to come back to. Make a determination, but that went out. Last week, the week before, that was amazing bit, you know, I think it was a couple of weeks ago and it's due back towards the end of the month.
It's something that no, we've talked about for a long time. We just hadn't put the money in the budget until this year, so.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the bids.
Yeah.
As I recall, the last time we, for the last couple of times, we put out um. Painting the bid, Libby Scott was the only one to respond. Um, so I'm not sure, I mean, like we, we, we even. Made it so that we could approve the bidding or approve it earlier in the cycle so they could get done sooner. Like uh, before we had to wait until. Like, yeah, like, yeah, we were trying to get it done earlier in the, in the year so that we could. Get them on it sooner. Um. Do you have? Other payers in mind that you want to work with or?
Well, Seawall said that they could suggest some things when that, when that proposal comes to me. Um, they said they, when they see the, the schedule and what we're gonna probably do in the next three to five years that. Uh, paving companies might be a little more interested in, in coming down on the kind of dollar amount in a schedule that we might have.
Okay.
Uh, I did talk to Libby Scott and then, and we did have uh, quite a few monies left over in that account. Because of the rainy season last year and I wanted to get started in June. Uh, they didn't come here until July. Uh, they, their excuse to me at that point was that they had a lot of last year's season stuff to catch up to. And uh, I'm just not happy with the situation that I am in with that because I have still five roads I wanted to try to get touched up this year before winter. And you really don't want to be paving in October.
Yeah, in the past, in the past, we put it out to bid and uh, it used to be Pike all the time that took the bid, but about six or seven years ago, they started bidding. Uh, is, we had, uh, was it Gorum Sand and Gravel that did the work over uh, Mopple Street? Is, you know, maybe since they did that work, maybe we can get them interested again. Now, I know that in the past they had, you know. Talked about it, but as you said, with a, a three to five year plan, if we have something more concrete, you know, they'd be probably more willing to look at it, so.
So Seawall is gonna grade all our roads for us as far as good, bad and worse, uh, give us kind of a perspective on where we should start. Uh, and, and go from there. It's an engineering firm. As well. Um. So again, when I see that, I'll, I'll, you know, pass it along. Email is fine or?
Yeah. Yeah, where are they out of, Jody?
Uh, I'm not sure of this, uh, I think they're right out of Portland.
Oh.
It's part of the DOT stuff that we see and that we learned, that I, excuse me, I learned in these classes that we go to. Uh, so that's just some. Other. Contracting stuff that uh, we, we got a source from.
Back to the plowing, you said that you're down two or three guys?
I'm down two employees right now in public works. Uh, we're hoping to. We have some good interviews, um. And we're seeing where they're going. This point. And talking about plowing, it also takes about two years to get big plow equipment. The, some of the body stainless steel stuff is actually out four hundred days. So moving forward. Um, if we were to. Order a plow, it would take two years to come in and then, and then we pay for it then. We don't pay for it until we receive it.
That would be coming up with budget time. There's a couple of, couple of trucks that need to be replaced, need to be looked at.
We ordered a truck in twenty one, we got that in October twenty three, we ordered a truck in twenty two, we just got that in August twenty four.
We have some old trucks, thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of repairs done.
Yes. At two.
That would be possibly replaced, may have.
I just wanted to pass on some other information. I did see some uh, previous meetings on, on the YouTube video stuff. Uh, the speed limits in any town can only be set by state DOT, just moving forward, trying to make some decisions on. Somebody's request about putting up twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs. That's all I got.
Any questions?
And just, you know, talking, going back to paving, one of my bugaboo's is the roads that only have a base coat on it.
Sure.
Is um, one of the plans for those?
Again, uh, Libby Scott, I had those on the schedule and uh. I, I keep getting pushed out. They're working in five, several towns, they're doing state, state bidding and they're doing state contracts that they. When I called them two days ago, they said, well, we're in the state contract and we gotta get this done within two weeks. And I'd said, well, I'd like to have one of those contracts. And I said, oh, I did sign one of those. And the phone call didn't end up too well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Mine up chief.
Yep.
No, no, he took the chief first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I just want to take a, a minute before I get into my long list of informational things that I think you really. Need to know about. I'd like to introduce. Steve Plant. Steve is one of my deputy chiefs. He's in charge of the department operations. I don't know if you've vetted him or not, but you have at this point, so.
Is there a relationship?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Jody.
Uh, I think the first thing that I should bring up. Um, I think we need to talk about staffing. Presently, we have six full-time people. Career people. We have twenty-three on call and four per diem at this time. Excuse me, we're running four shifts, twenty-four hour shifts. With two shift staff with two career. Two shift staff with one career and a per diem when I can get that per diem. Since July, problem is. Uh, you were gracious enough, or the town was, to provide us with two additional full-time positions. Uh, it took us a while to fill those. Uh, we ended up filling those from the on-call force. They had the qualifications, so they were, they were the best out of the eight that we interviewed. So when I did that, I lost per diem. People who were working per diem shift. So since July, uh. I've spent like seventeen thousand dollars in overtime. Which as far as I'm concerned, was legit because I had to have that second man coverage. And I had to do that because I didn't have enough per diems, so I have to bring in my full-time people that cover that shift. That's an issue and it's gonna continue to be an issue. Um. Pay ranges, just so you know, the on-call. Staff make anywhere between sixteen dollars and twenty-two dollars an hour. And I'm bringing this up because wages are an issue. Uh, my per diem, we're paying twenty-one to twenty-five dollars an hour. Area towns right now have just raised that to twenty-seven. So we're in competition and trying to keep staff. Uh. Call wise. We're up a hundred and forty-four calls from last year at this time. It's increasing and I suspect it's gonna increase. With the, with the building going on, not only here, but in. Uh, in the country, uh. So that's gonna be an issue for the town. Uh. If there's any questions as I get out through these, just stop me and I will try to answer them for you. We'll go back in the end. Um. Grants. The safer grant, we had reapplied uh, for three years. Uh, we still haven't heard anything up to date. Today, um, that should be announced pretty soon. I would suspect that we haven't heard anything now, so that probably will not occur. We probably won't get that grant. Could change, but as of right now. The Assistant to Fire Act Grant, you're all aware that we did get a grant for air packs, twenty-eight packs. It was two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Bids for those just went out today. Should be back. Middle of October, I believe. And then they'll come to you for approval. Um. And just overall, the department staff, including myself. Are being asked to conduct more uh, fire safety inspections. Residential as well as commercial. I'm involved with a lot of the plans review for the planning board. I am the only one certified to do that at this point. So I'm working on trying to get other people trained. But that's an issue that's gonna be coming up, uh. That's gonna need be addressed down, down the road as well. Uh. I have my senior staff working on. A tentative plan. A future plan in the event that it's necessary. For the department to have to take over the ambulance service. I don't suspect that's gonna happen right off quick, but we are planning for it. Uh, it's gonna take a while to put that plan together. Once that plan's done, we'll bring it to you. You can do. As you're pleased with that plan. But at least if something happens. We'll have a plan to give the town. So. That's kind of long range. Uh, Fire Prevention Week's coming up. We're gonna be in the schools. Uh, we did a daycare today, um. We probably do around fifteen hundred children throughout the year. Including daycares, um. And that's handled by two of my staff. Apparatus. Our apparatus overall, including equipments in good shape. Uh, the chief's car, uh, uh, chief car, car one. Is need re, be, be replaced now. It's got eighty-nine thousand and probably won't get a stick-up next time. But no matter what we do, it's gonna take at least a year to get anything. Truck one is the ladder truck. That's a nineteen ninety-five, um, twenty-seven years old. Um, it's really nine years over the expected date. But. We need to really be looking at. When do we wanna? Replace it.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing a lot of work on that over the last several years.
Oh yeah, I can, I can give you, we, we've spent thousands of dollars.
Ten to thousands.
Um. The last was the steel ladder cracked and we had to have it rewelded, but it's just age. It, in, in, in this coming. To auto one of those truck or any fire truck today, you're looking at two and a half to four years. Delivery. So.
What kind of a price do you look in for that truck?
Right now, you're probably looking at. A million and a half at least. Probably even more than that.
Is that the grant that you're applying for also to help?
That's the grant we're looking at applying for this coming grant season, which is coming out. But we're being told we'd. Probably have a hard time doing that, but we're gonna give it a shot. It, the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost.
Is that, you, when you, when we do replace that, is uh, would you be looking at a platform lift rather than a ladder?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna go that way, that's the way to go, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be more stable, more, you know, safer for the man.
The, the other thing that the chief had told me is that. Our ladder can't reach these new buildings being built, can't reach the top.
Depending upon where we gotta set up the ladder, like if you go out here and try to set a ladder up, you're not gonna be able to because of. The uh, power lines are there. Can you work around that somewhat? But it's not safe. So depending upon where we can place the truck. We probably might just about make the, not sure. We're gonna try it though, so I can answer that question.
Well, the power lines will be buried.
Power lines are an issue. But I guess those are going underground at some point.
Hopefully with twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
But one of the good things about this whole project is all those apartments are sprinkling, so. Um. That's basically my review. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you. I'm sure we'll be talking again at budget season.
We definitely.
It sounds like, yeah.
Um, when you talk about staffing, um. Are you looking for? I gue- I guess just looking at, because you're saying if it's covered for the per diem and you're paying the OT, are you looking at trying to raise that per diem rate, or are you looking at potentially trying to add? Another full-time or part-time employee?
I think my recommendation would be. At this point, time to go with two more full-time positions so I can fill those two other shifts. That's not gonna solve the problem. I should have at least four to five guys, even six at times on shift. I know that's not gonna happen in Towne, Burwick, can't afford that. But you're coming down the road, that's what, that's what you're gonna end up with, especially if you take over an ambulance.
The ambulance.
And I, I can, I can assure you right now, and I've already been told that. Stuart's ambulance, who has not charged the town anything. Probably within the next year or two is gonna start charging the town. How much? We don't know yet, but.
We've talked in the past about the, the ambulance service in town and, and you guys taking it over and um. If I remember correctly, is, is. The way the insurances and things are similar to what Stuart works with now is it can be a, a money-making venture. You know, correct?
I would suspect that you and I talked years ago about that. My understanding from what I'm hearing is that. The. Charges that the ambulance service makes to Medicare doesn't, what they pay Medicare pays. Isn't half of what they get charged. So that would have to be looked at, Tom. Back then, yes, it did work. Today, uh, no, uh, it's not working that way. I think over a period of time, it would pay for itself through the town. But it's gonna take a big expense on the town to get started in that, in that area. I'm not suggesting we do that at this point. I'm just giving you a heads up. It's coming.
The uh. A new fire truck. Do you pay when you order? Do you pay when you receive it?
Well, it depends upon what kind of an agreement we come with the manufacturer. I would suspect today. It would probably want sundown payment.
Mm-hmm.
Um. When we ordered our last two new trucks, I don't think we gave them anything down. It was just, here's the contract, we'll build my trucks. Took about what a year?
I, I can say, I work at a local fire department full-time. And we just purchased a new bike. There you go. I work at a local uh, full-time fire department. Neighbor in Burwick. And we just purchased a, or just went into an agreement with um, a manufacturer for a new fire engine because the. The price of it, just to get the engine for the vehicle was, went up like thirty or, or it's gonna go up thirty or forty thousand dollars. So they signed a contract. To, after this last budget, to sign the contract. So the vehicle won't be in for two or three years. Uh, but they, they'll recognize the price of it today and it won't change when they get it in three or four years. So that was one of the reasons to bump it up, because they would have had to wait two or three years from now and then another two or three, or probably more than that by then. To receive the vehicle. So you're looking five, six years out.
Does the town have to pay anything upfront?
No. Usually, they just signed an agreement and they are, they'll honor it.
My experience is that they may ask you to pay for the chassis, but other than that, they'll. Hold off on everything until you get it delivered. Some vendors do that. Once they get the chassis, they ask you just to pay for the chassis. Which isn't upon track, so.
I would say at minimum during budget season, knowing that this is coming up, we should look at putting maybe some more money away into the. Savings account. Um. Knowing that we're gonna have. Potentially two million dollar bill coming in for the trucks. Before. At some point, no.
I was kind of thinking about the um, positions a little, a little bit more. So you're thinking two full-time regular positions. Um. Right. Two, two more full-time.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation.
And then the others, you said, are getting sixteen to twenty-two an hour. And we should be competitive with the other surrounding towns. And. To get somebody else to be an inspector, what would that take?
Uh, training, you know, more training, getting people interested in going and doing it. You know, with four people on shift, the, they all have their different assignments. To take one of those persons out and send them to school for two weeks, I gotta cover that shift. That's all overtime. Whoever comes in and covers that is overtime. Because when a full-time result, he has to be replaced by a full-time. Which. That creates the overtime issue.
So it can be somebody in-house. We don't need a different person to do that. It can be somebody, all right.
I think with all the development happening in town, especially going on across the street. Eventually, we're gonna have to look at at least two more for the fire and probably a couple more for police with the amount of people that are gonna be coming to town soon.
Like I said, the calls have gone up. Hundred and, and forty-four calls this time last year. So they're increasing and I suspect they're gonna continue to increase.
Is there any pattern to the increase? Is it certain?
No, it's, it's, it's more a medical aid, uh, three quarters of our responses, uh, medical aid calls. Uh, which is good because it's paid off in a lot of cases. It takes an ambulance anyways from six to eight minutes to get on scene. We're there within two to three minutes. And it's paid off. It has. I can speak personally. Yeah.
Any other questions for the fire chief?
No, he's just warning us.
Yeah. We will, we will definitely do know over all this again at budget time.
It's just used to that at budget time anyway.
This is the pre.
This is the softening up.
Soft warning.
This is the softening up for when we get to the budget time and he has.
That way they don't have the shock and awe.
Yeah.
I'll get you a copy of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy. PCM director.
Hi.
You have a five-minute department report for us.
Yes. There we go. Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've just switched our, um. The way we're broadcasting on channel ninety-five, so in, in switching that, we, um, we bumped ourselves, so we'll have that fixed for the uh, planning board, so. I, I, uh, I wanna quickly update everybody on where we're at with the, the website update, which is uh, coming up. Uh, just quickly going through, touching on some of our past stuff, you know, obviously we've had. Some uh, some issues in the past with um. You know. Communication being maybe, maybe something that, that people felt like we needed to work on and uh, improve. So that's uh, that has been the focus. Uh, moving forward, you know, we, we worked on. Obviously, the brand starting in twenty uh, seventeen, I think you all first. Started changing the signs for that first uh, bring your lawn chairs to Sullivan Square. We uh, launched that new brand. Started doing signs, as you can see. Social media. Where a quarterly went out. Uh, more merch and upgrade on the merch and then obviously touch points like uh. Business cards and uh, stationery. Public Works took on um. The brand for their trucks and for their um, you know, vehicles and such. And then um, started working with uh. Uh, Parks, Parks and Rec, the rec department, Trash Bash, Spring Cleanup, Easter Egg, the Camp Out. Obviously Lawn Chairs, slightly separate brand, different colors, but also, you know, very dialed in. Brand-specific, Historical Society through Division Burwick also has had uh, you know, branding that's very specific. And obviously, everybody's um. Dealt with the Burwick Bi Monthly. I think that's been a huge success story following the, the difficulties of getting word out through the Burwick Quarterly. And the uh. Every Door Direct Mailer. We have had excellent feedback from there. The signs, could, you know, obviously we lost our sign this year. We're gonna be. Putting that sign back up, probably bigger and better with the larger messaging on both sides next summer. Uh, but the transfer station sign is in progress and we'll have messaging that should be ready shortly. We're hoping to get that in the ground before frost. Same with the uh, boat launch. My YouTube thumbnails, you can't really see this, but I, I can share this with you guys. Um, they have changed significantly. They're a lot more legible. They were, you know, um, just a little scattershot. So we've dialed that in and that will continue for, for our broadcast as well as YouTube. And which brings me to where we're at with the, the website itself. The, the, the website is, and, and we've talked about this. Is adopting the, the Burwick Quarterly or Burwick Bi Monthly approach with the Burwick Daily. It will have a blog-style news from all departments coming out. So that, you know, as. So that, you know, as information is available on a daily basis, there will be information that not only is coming through the website, but then is blasted to our social media. So, uh, you know, our, our, our Facebook, for example, will look like this. It'll, it'll be, you know, each town department will be under the Town of Burwick Facebook page. And so those departments will have their information all available through the Town of Burwick. That will then link back to literally articles with information from everything from registering for camp to um, you know, uh, drop your paint off at the transfer station day. So all town departments, we will take on that communication. They'll keep their Instagram accounts and their separate social media accounts for, I'm sorry, their separate websites. Police and Fire will maintain their own separate Facebook pages and, and, but this, so Rec, Public Works, Envision Burwick, all of that will BCM all fall under the Town of Burwick. And that's, that is uh, already been presented to the uh, department heads uh, at the last department head meeting and uh, something we're working towards. And should um, the website should be live this winter. It's been in progress for about six months. So we're, we're very close, very excited about it. This is uh, uh, you know, not, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is what a lot of towns are doing. This is what I've learned from the, you know, with classes I've taken with the Maine Municipal Association. Um, and we're really following the model of Rochester, which has done a great job with this. But, you know, I'm, I'm in communication with a lot of my contemporaries and other towns around us and and this seems to be a um, a more efficient way to communicate with the public and to end what has been a, a, a complicated time going from the mode where we communicated through just TV essentially in the past to figuring out how social media will best serve the public.
So the new sign at the transfer station, it will have like message board on it? Like vote this Tuesday, things like that?
Yeah, and, and uh, really as part of, you know, what BCM does, that messaging will be part of, you know, I will personally go there and change that messaging. And as we develop more signs, that will be part of our responsibility because, you know, communication is, that is communication. It's really important.
Well, it's what everybody complains about, but you know.
Well, there's lots to complain of.
And the transfer station is the best place for communication cuz you'll get everybody.
Well, you hope. We, we think, we think we get everybody with a sign at the town hall, but we don't strike. What other messaging signs are, are you thinking about?
Well, we, we do have the one, did have the one right across from Gateway. And there was a, um, we had an accident with uh, with uh, 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 landscaping, uh, so that sign is being replaced. I believe that what, you know, as we work with code for where the placement and the height of the sign, uh, it that was the first sign that, that we did through Envision Burwick, you know, like five or six years ago. So this is the first one, and, and we really went off of the, the two granite posts. But it was low and it was small. And I think it could be bigger, and it was also only had messaging on one side, and I believe that the messaging has been very successful. I'd like to see it have messaging on both sides, so that either direction, you're gonna be able to read, you know, vote, or, you know, any other town information that we wanna share that one.
Jeremy, if we do this, I think we're gonna stand out from the other towns. It's gonna look great.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very excited about it. I think it, it, the, the opportunity to um, really uh, move the meter for Burwick in, in one fell swoop is gonna be, uh, really, it does look good, I believe. We, we have a great team working on this, and um, the, the buy-in from the department's been excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're good, Jeremy.
Thank you.
I was just thinking about the uh, you know, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, go to a website and maybe you'd update like once every month or a couple weeks, or even longer. You just like, like now we check a website, like it hasn't updated in the past hour. This is crazy. All right, no appointments. Um, under unfinished business, we have HR manager, uh, job description, policy directive purchasing and remote wor- work policy. Uh, Linda's not here to um, uh, we wanna have her here to finalize those, so I think we should table those for right now.
As well as she had email issues, I didn't get her notes from the last meeting. To incorporate, I tried to incorporate as much as I could from my absolute blinded memory and my notes.
We'll get those done. There's not, lucky those aren't time-sensitive. Um, how manager porn?
Okay. The handicap ramp has been installed back there. It's not ready for use yet cuz we have to level it out to the sidewalk, as well as we're looking to see where we can do the handicap spot because of the size of it. As well as we're getting full-time widening the door up at the top. I mean, it could be used right now for somebody if they didn't need a wheelchair. Um, but it's, it's in, paid for. Done off the books from a couple of years ago. The Mold Street project is done, other than a few small punch list items. It looks great. They did a great job with it over there. York County Board of Assessors for Appeal, we ended up losing that appeal, and we will be given a notice of decision that we have to do an abatement for the two additional years, so that we can go up to three. It was kinda hard to defend when it was basically our fault, that we didn't see the mistake. Since nineteen ninety-eight. The requisition has been posted. We received several very good applications. I wanna say we received about fifteen of them. Uh, we're doing interviews on the ninth and tenth, and we'll be, well, at this point, I wanna drop that to five cuz one person has not responded back about an interview. Based on research, I know this came up at the last meeting, employees are allowed to waive their lunch break. And I believe I put the documentation in your, in your packets that says where they can. The, I finished the RFP for legal and that has gone out to bid. I did notify our current legal service that we're going out to bids. Obviously, they have a chance to bid on it, so. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting regarding the drainage project. That went very well. Um, we're looking at probably starting that within the next couple of weeks, and they're hoping to be done by mid-November.
I, I saw they started stockpiling materials.
I wanna say, for some reason, either fifteenth or seventeenth rings a bell in my head as far as when they're starting and they're planning on being done before Thanksgiving. Uh, I will be at the MMA conference um, the next few days, so if anybody needs me, please feel free to call me, text me. Uh, I'll be up there, and that is it.
Any questions for the town manager?
The ramp. You said that was a temporary ramp?
It's considered a temporary ramp cuz you literally can take it apart and move it anywhere you want.
Okay, but is that the ramp that's staying, or are we getting a wooden ramp?
No, that's the ramp that's staying.
That's on the same. So, do we have any timeframe on when we're gonna? So that, that people can actually use a wheelchair there, or?
Well, it depends on when I get the bids back, and we, we may have to do a warrant article for it for next year's budget. Um, cuz it's not gonna be an easy thing to widen that door because of the mason and stuff, so.
That's why we hadn't, hadn't done it in the past because.
That's right.
A modern-day wheelchair probably couldn't fit through there, but the newer, the newer, bigger electric ones would have.
My, my biggest fear and, and wanting to get that in is, God forbid, we're, have something going on upstairs and we lose power and the generators and kick in and we need to get out of the building, we can certainly get people out of the building. That way, we need it rather than going down the stairs.
Any other questions?
The waiving the lunch. Is that per week, per day, or do you just always say, I'm not having lunch today, or how does that work?
It's, once you sign the waiver, then you waive the lunch for the entire time unless you unsigned it.
Okay. But it's not, oh, I didn't today, or I did today. It's, you, you did, you didn't.
Yeah, and I, and I know, like I said, there was questions at the last meeting, whether the Department of Labor accepted that or not, so.
All right. Select Board Communications, we have a couple here. Comcast is discontinuing cable cards, whatever that is. Um, the Dunn Farm has um, received some this is for a grant, I guess. Know what it is? Yeah. Um, they received a grant, I guess. And the um, state is giving us their valuations. And that's about it, really. Counts payable. All right, we have the payroll warrant number twenty-nine from September twenty-six in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Accounts payable warrant number thirty from September thirtieth in the amount of a hundred and four, one hundred forty thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Accounts payable warrant number thirty-one from September thirtieth in the amount of one million, five hundred eight thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and seventy-one cents. Payroll warrant number thirty-two from October third in the amount of ninety thousand, ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Accounts payable warrant number thirty-three from October first in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And accounts payable warrant number thirty-four in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred twenty-six, twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Except for that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who the, oh, new business, um, Dog Ordnance.
Rachel is not here. We've contacted her to let us know when she's planning on coming. We haven't heard back from her yet, so.
Okay. Um, table that for right now. Fee change policy.
At the last meeting, you guys had wanted me to come up with some kind of a policy to start looking at around if we wanna change fees in the town for things, so. First go at it, first draft.
Any comments about the first draft?
I didn't, surprisingly. So I liked it.
You liked it?
I was like, huh, good start, Derek.
It's on our list of best reads.
Yes.
Um, okay.
How about you?
Seems a little light, but you know.
Light, but it's a start.
Yeah.
But it's light.
So, since the public can't see what we're doing.
The board, the board last meeting had asked me to come up with a policy on if we need to change. I'm gonna call them user fees, but like fees for the rec, building permit fees, planning board fees. Come up with a policy on how we were gonna do that, certain criteria, and what we were gonna do. A maximum amount that they could go up in a year, and also how we were gonna notify the public.
Yeah.
Policy that I came up with gave criteria of why we would increase it, whether it's um, inflation, increase in cost, increase improvements, facility. Uh, to determine the process would be a cost-benefit analysis, market research, consultation with the stakeholders. The board will make the final decision about any fee increase. And the board is required to hold one public hearing prior to a fee increase. Uh, communication plan would be timely notification with thirty, thirty days. Uh, it's, uh, clear expectations and a feedback mechanism, which would be the public hearing. Review and adjustment, there'd be annual review of fees, flexibility to adjust fees up to ten percent yearly. Does not mean they will go up ten percent. They may not go up at all, but that's the most that they can go up. Uh, the other considerations, customer impact. Be mindful of potential impact of fee increases on customers, especially for those who may find, be financially vulnerable. Alternative revenue source, e- explore other revenue generating opportunities to minimize the need for fee increases. Um, and regulatory compliance, ensure that the fee increases comply with all applicable laws and regulations.
Yeah, I think a lot of why we requested this was, or I, I think when it kinda started, it was like, you know, looking at rec. There's a lot of need to go up, but not to say, okay, well, this year we're gonna do this, and you know, residents are prepared for it, and also next year we come back and say, hey, also, we're gonna go up twenty percent this year, you know, so it's more to protect the residents in the town from departments coming in and just saying, okay, we're gonna keep.
Well, that's what, the one comment I was gonna make is the, you know, under the review and adjustments of the adjust the fees up to ten percent in a yearly review. Um, there may be circumstances beyond the town's control that would require us to increase more than ten percent. You know, I can't say anything right off the top of my head, but, you know, whether it be supply problems or personnel problems or something, I, I just question that ten percent.
Well, I mean, thinking about it, I mean, just like um, for the most part, all these fees are relatively they're relatively small compared to, say, property taxes or something like that, you know, like property taxes doesn't have a cap in terms of it, but, so like, I mean, if we did need, if like, there was a call for whatever reason that that summer camp just got so much more expensive.
Well, that's the example I was gonna use. Several years ago, we increased probably two hundred percent on summer camp fees.
Yeah.
So, you know, because we were charging so low before, you know, there's that that there, that we have to take that into consideration. No, I'm, I'm willing to work with that. I'm just, you know, pointing that out that there are circumstances beyond our control that might necessitate an increase more than ten percent.
Do you want me to add a line in there in regards to that, so that the board has that option?
Or just take ten percent out, right?
Well, I think Linda was pretty uh, emphatic about there being a cap, so people knew what was going on, but I do think there should be a mechanism for us to override it if there's material proof.
I can put a line in there that something to the effect that the board of select would have the authority to override the ten percent due to unforeseen circumstances.
Emergency circumstances, something, something that, something that we can't just override it every year because we want to, but because there's actually a material issue that we have to deal with.
Like I said, the, the example I was gonna use was, used with the rec fees, you know, and it wasn't just the summer camp, it was also with the sports teams and everything. We determined that we're expending a lot of money at the rec field, and we needed to recruit some of that money. And that's why, is we instituted the fee, not only on the organizations, but also included in there the cost per child using that. So, so that would have definitely gone over the ten percent. Being, you know, so I'm just, you know, remembering past things that we have done that, you know, would necessitate us to go over that ten percent.
It's helpful when you do that.
So, my mind is already trying to break the rules and figure out, it's like, when if we needed to, we could invent a new fee, cuz there's no rule about inventing a new fee.
I know, I thought of that too, but I didn't wanna say.
If there's no fee and you create a fee, doesn't, there's no ten percent rule there.
Theoretically, there would be. If there's no fee, you can't go up.
Yeah, so it's like
Always thinking.
My, my brain just want, this is looking through loopholes already.
Luckily, you're never gonna have a policy that doesn't have.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we'll come back to that.
That, I think it's a good, you know, policy, you know, go moving in the right direction.
We'll, we'll let Linda give her two cents on it and let you update it a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, next, I have the request, given what Jody said tonight, I'd like to do a children at play sign on Evergreen Drive. I did not realize in the state of Maine, uh, every road was governed by DOT and, and most, in state of the Hampshire, it's only state roads and town can do what they want.
Um, no, it is, I went through that when I was um, a state rep, cuz there were several people in town that wanted roads posted and changed, and we had to go through the state to do that, so. But, but yeah, I know, other signs. Well, there is an example I could state on Hubbard Road where decades ago, the town put up a twenty-five mile an hour sign, and the state never argued with it, and it's still there.
Uh, is the board have any objections to me having Jody put up a children at play sign?
What's the cost of a, of subs?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but they're not, from what I've seen from invoices, they're not that expensive.
Yeah.
Talking maybe fifty bucks, sixty bucks.
I'll make a motion that we approve the children at play sign for Evergreen Drive. A second. Any further discussion?
Better make it, better make it two signs, one at each end. In the opposite directions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As many signs as you think is needed for that road. All those in favor? All those in favor? Alright. Um, next is the non-union pay. We're gonna table that for. Yeah, we're all here. There's not, it's not a rush issue, so. We'll get the whole board on here for that.
My own obsession with getting the budget in the way.
Yeah, the budget for twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, no quick lane deeds. We have an abatement for a tree growth penalty.
Yep, the gentleman on Horn, on, um, Horns Mill Road. He has a total acreage of forty-seven acres. There would be a. Uh, penalty of four thousand, five hundred seventy-six forty to be issued and he is aware of it.
Any questions?
Yeah, we're fine.
He asked if he could skip tonight. I told him I could.
I'll make a motion to approve the tree growth penalty on tax map lot R zero two one dash seven. Four thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents.
Oh, second there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
But just to let you know that, that piece of property that we're talking about there, a box. Town property on a little river there. We've talked about in the past, creating another park there. But, uh, that was.
Is, is that the part that's also like, there's no. It's like the town property is almost surrounded by private properties.
We have the right, no, we have the right. Right, right. There, there's an official right of way. So that's what goes to Steve Brown's property.
Okay.
It goes past, you know, our property out there, so there is, uh, several houses down there on the right of way now.
Yep.
Um, but we own, I think like seven or eight acres along the river there. Used to keep their voice count.
Yes. Second public comment? Any member of the public wanna talk? Alright, I'll close second public comment.
And we don't have to do an executive session if you guys don't have anything to that one.
Let me think. No, I don't have anything specific to come to mind. Alright, well then, uh, with no executive session, I will make a motion that we, oh, we, other, other business, not agenda items. Anybody? It's fine, it's fine. Um, I have nothing, um, but there's an election in a month in case you haven't heard, so, you know. Vote, don't complain about.
How, how is, how is the voter registration been going, Patty? You've been getting a lot of people, you know, registering?
Yeah, with the new online voter reg through this state, we're, I'm getting like. Seven a day. So I hope that's only cut down on same-day registers.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so we're actually conducting, um, the vote in presence of the clerk. Come down, vote. You're all set for taking.
I wanna give Patty credit. She did a mock election with some of the, uh, high school students today. And it, it was great watching them and having them learn and stuff and she did a great job and it was just a great. It's the first time I've seen anything like that. It was a great experience for me. It's like I can only imagine the experience.
It was fun.
We even got us one kid to register.
Oh, really?
Eighteen and a Berwick resident, so we got him all set up and he's planning on coming back every day.
Oh, so.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, I. Second, all those in favor? Good night.